Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the organizational meeting of the Board of Education to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whose majesty is the law. Dr. Landau, would you please review the fire access?
They're in the back of the LGI.
Thank you. So we're going to administer the oath of office to our newly re-elected board members. Start with... So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm, I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm, that I will support, that I will support, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, of the State of New York, of the State of New York, as board member, as board member, of the Board of Education, of the Board of Education, of the City School District, of the City School District, of the City of Beacon, of the City of Beacon, County of Duchess, County of Duchess, and State of New York, and State of New York. Thank you very much. Please raise your right hand. I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm,
I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm,
that I will support,
that I will support,
the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the United States,
of the State of New York,
of the State of New York,
as board member,
as board member,
of the Board of Education,
of the Board of Education,
of the City School District,
of the City School District,
City of Beacon,
City of Beacon,
County of Duchess,
County of Duchess,
and State of New York,
and State of New York.
Congratulations. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Sang. Please, thank you for raising your hand. I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm,
I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
of the State of New York,
of the State of New York,
as board member,
as board member,
of the Board of Education,
of the Board of Education,
City School District,
City School District,
of the City of Beacon,
of the City of Beacon,
County of Duchess,
County of Duchess,
and State of New York,
and State of New York.
Congratulations. May I have a motion for the appointment of the district clerk?
So moved. Cobb, motion to appoint Kelly Hology to the position of clerk of the board?
Second. Pick who you like better, Kelly.
Someone call it, please.
Checking the minutes.
Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a nomination for the office of president?
I actually would like to nominate myself for president.
Are there any other nominations?
Make a motion to nominate Anthony White as the president of the Board of Education.
Any other nominations? Is there a second to Anthony's motion for the nomination of Anthony as president? Hearing none? Is there a second for Mr. Rakowski's motion to appoint Mr. White as president? Second. So the motion is to nominate Mr. White? Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? I declare that Mr. White is president of the Board of Education for the 1920 school year. So please raise your right hand. I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm,
I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
of the State of New York,
of the State of New York,
as president,
as president,
of the Board of Education,
of the Board of Education,
of the City School District,
of the City School District,
of the City of Beacon,
of the City of Beacon,
County of Duchess,
County of Duchess,
and State of New York,
and State of New York.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you continue on now?
No.
Since the president will call for nominations.
Any motion to nominate, for nominations of office of vice president?
I nominate Meredith Huer. Second.
Any other nominations? Alyssa's second for...
For Meredith.
Yep. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven.
So now I'll administer the oath.
I administer it, or you?
I do. Okay, please raise your right hand once again. I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm, I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, of the State of New York, of the State of New York, as vice president, as vice president, of the Board of Education, of the Board of Education, the City School District, of the City School District, City of Beacon, the City of Beacon, County of Duchess, County of Duchess, and State of New York, and State of New York. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Sorry. More signatures?
I declare Meredith Huer to serve as vice president of the board for the 1920 school year. Congratulations, Meredith. Please raise your right hand. I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm,
I do hereby solemnly swear or affirm,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
of the State of New York,
the State of New York,
as clerk of the board,
as clerk of the board,
of the Board of Education,
of the Board of Education,
of the City School District,
of the City School District,
of the City of Beacon,
of the City of Beacon,
County of Duchess,
County of Duchess,
and State of New York,
and State of New York.
Congratulations. You want to do a vote call? We already did that?
No, no. Ms. Betterman?
Here.
Mr. Caslayal?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Rakowski?
Here.
Ms. Stadler?
Excuse.
Mr. Sang?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Excuse.
Ms. Huer?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Any motion to adjourn to executive?
So moved. For employment history of particular individuals.
Correct. Anthony? Is there a second?
Second.
Meredith? Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Reviewing the agenda, there are no changes. So I need a motion to waive agenda items 6.02 through 6.07.
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, eight oh. I need a motion to appoint members to committees.
So moved.
Second.
That was Mike. Meredith, second. All right, so our student advisors to the board are... Grace Affeldt.
How do you spell it, please?
A-F-F-E-L-D-T. And Kahlia, K-A-H-L-I-A, Durso, D-U-R-S-O. All right.
Is anyone here in here, or what?
Yes. Rising.
Maybe they'll start meeting with us?
They will start, they'll be at the first meeting in September.
Excellent.
And they are both very excited about being on the board. They have lots of ideas and they are also in lots of activities. But Monday night works and so they are, can't wait to get started. Great. Any volunteers for the audit committee?
I volunteer. That was two of us at once.
I thought there were three.
We need three.
I'll do it. I mean, unless anybody else wants to. I'll do it, it's fine.
Craig, you said yourself?
Yep.
Was there anybody else that wanted to be part of the committee that didn't have the opportunity? Okay. That being said, we have Mike, Kristen, and Craig for the audit committee. The audit committee doesn't have a chair, correct?
No.
Okay. We have a diversity committee. Members for the diversity committee?
Anthony.
Meredith, did you raise your hand?
I did not. I feel like we should give Flora an opportunity.
Yeah, that's what I'm kind of...
I meant to check in for chairs, so...
Who is the third member on this show?
Flora.
I know that Flora's not here, so has anybody talked with her to see if she has interest in taking the committees?
She's still interested in wellness, I know that.
Yeah. I'll be a backup for diversity if she doesn't want it, if she doesn't...
All right, but you're okay putting Flora first to continue on if she doesn't want to?
Mm-hmm.
Are you sure she wanted to be on wellness, still?
Yeah. I think that's her passion project. Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure.
She said it in the...
I don't know, and I did, I thought of it earlier today. I thought of reaching out to her for an advocacy application.
I texted her, because we, I used to be on wellness, so we...
So at the committee meeting for diversity, you guys would nominate chair?
Chair. Who is the third on diversity?
Flora.
Flora and Anthony and... James.
And James. At meeting, chair will be... Facilities and operations?
Me, I'll volunteer.
Mike? Kristen? Craig, you...
Yep.
Was there anybody else that wanted to be on FNO?
I would, I'm interested in FNO, but do we have more spots in FNO?
We don't, but what we could do if we have more than the three, we could do a, like, vote type of thing for it.
Okay.
Can we have an alternate system? Case, not all the members show up.
Yeah, like, what if somebody can't show up?
That might be a good idea.
Yeah, we could do an alternate, if you want that.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
I'll be an alternate for that.
And you'll be all for diversity as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to be an alternate for facilities also. If Alyssa's down, I'll go. I mean, I'll just be the public.
Alyssa wants to be an alternate for facilities and Anthony wants to be Alyssa's alternate for alternate.
Got it.
Could you, could you repeat the alternates there, Mr. President?
I just had Alyssa and then Anthony said, I thought he said yes, but then I thought you took it back and said only if Alyssa couldn't make it.
He said, yeah.
Whatever the rules may be, if it's for both alternates, obviously we'll have to decide there then. Who's going to have to vote? What is the final roster of that committee?
Mike, Kristen, Craig.
Unless, unless it wants, unless you want to make a rule that you can only have one alternate, then that covers me, though. With alternates, we haven't been using, so...
I think it's a good idea to have alternates.
I have one alternate per...
I would say one alternate.
It'd be easier for the chair, because then you're like trying to...
Yep.
It's easier to organize if you just have one. Yeah, then we'll, you'll have quorum, that adds some helpful as well.
We'll have one alternate.
Okay, one alternate, okay, so Alyssa will be the alternate. I'll back off.
Policy committee?
Me.
Me. James. Anybody else who's interested?
I, Jane, I saw James, Alyssa.
I, I'm interested.
Want to be the alternate?
Yeah.
Well, why not, you know, that, the policy committee, I think we need to, maybe we should mix it up. You know, because we have James and Alyssa, if you're one year in, Anthony's been around the three. I'm just thinking that, I mean, I think we had a lot of policy work this year. And that's what I was thinking, if Meredith was on there, it would help, I think it would maybe balance it a little bit. Well, I mean, she, like, for example, the last policy, the last two policy committee meetings, she was there. And, you know, Anthony couldn't make it, so it was good to have that rounded discussion. I do agree. But, so I think the having her as the alternate may, may address that. Because Anthony can't make all the meetings, even though, even though he's not de facto a...
Ex officio.
Yeah, officio, member of all the committees. Right. So...
I could if the schedules are out in advance. I mean, when, when I get the schedules out in advance, I plan my rest of my life around what's happening there. I mean, that was the issue with the policy and diversity, was it was like, okay, at the next board meeting, it was being said and stuff. And that, I cannot plan around. My job doesn't allow it and my family life doesn't allow that piece.
Yeah, and while they're required to, you know, provide the schedule after the first meeting. I mean, that's what we did in facilities for the past couple of years, like, okay, let me make the schedule. And we pretty much stuck with it.
I asked, that was a request I asked and they're, you were great with it and it happened.
Well, we should ask you for alternate calendars, to come up with the, I mean, it's once a month.
I have asked.
Have your dates.
I mean, because then you could just put it in your calendar for a year and it's easier to cancel than it is to try and come up with a date. So if you put it in for the year, it's easier to cancel and say, oh, there's an alternate. Like, your work schedule sometimes relays. So at the, at the committee meeting, then you're coming up with alternate dates and it's not taking board time to do that piece. Because you know at that FNO committee meeting, hey, we need to do that piece, so...
Well, I think the other thing about facilities is that it's, we kind of know, we have very defined tasks and goals. Like, we know the, the structure of it as like exactly what we're doing and what we're trying to achieve in that year. And it's, and we have vendors that we have to schedule. So it, it just feels like it runs a bit differently. I know Meredith said this, I'm not on, I mean, other than wellness and like audit and technology, which really didn't mean this much and that much this year, facilities runs very differently than a lot of the other meetings. So I think that, I think it would be, it would be, there would be value in doing some work upfront to define the goals of the meeting of the, of the committees for the year and what they're going to accomplish so that... I, I feel like it's when, they get sort of, there's things that get bogged down if you don't have sort of that defined upfront and then new things get sort of rolled into it. So like, I know we're, like, if we knew kind of like what the policy goals were for this year, like, what the pipeline will be, and then we just sort of schedule that. And then if there's something special that gets moved into that, we sort of agree that it's going to get moved in and scheduled. So that way, we can sort of plan better for it and then it can be kind of defined.
I'm, I'm writing, that's a great suggestion. I'm writing it down. And so that could be the task at the first committee meetings, to come up with a meeting schedule and the goals for the year.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Because then I think it also allows us to kind of know as a board, like, what's happening and...
I agree.
Didn't we, didn't we last year decide, like, have a preference for, was it Wednesday?
Monday and Wednesday.
Monday and Wednesday was the preferred.
So can we keep that also if, if, you know, if committees meetings can happen?
So the diversity committee, the second year that it was, that it was in fourth, it was in existence, we used to do the second Thursday of the month.
Is there a reason that Wednesday doesn't work for you?
I'm in the city.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, obviously it doesn't work for you.
Yeah, so we used to do the second Thursday of the month and we used to use later, the later slot because that's when most people can make it. And we actually, every year, we've, we've had, you know, a, a goal-setting meeting, so... But, you know, I think the topics continue to evolve and change and then...
We don't need to discuss it right now, just, that will be at the committee meeting.
Yeah.
But I'm just taking down suggestions, so when we go to that, we have a plan and then we could share that work with the rest of the board, so people can put it in their calendars and stuff. So going back to policy, Meredith, are you fine with being an alternate? Or do, we could do a vote and do vote for three members?
Who are the three?
We have James, Alyssa, Anthony, they're all returning, and Meredith expressed interests.
I mean, how would the vote, just the board members vote?
The top three vote getters for each.
I don't know, I mean, it's always been a pretty, like, cordial situation. I, I don't know if I'm, maybe to put it to a vote, I'm happy to be...
You're okay being an alternate?
Yeah, and I can go in your place if you end or...
And that's one of the things, if we get the schedules, then I can work out with you for ones that I know I won't be able to make.
Yeah.
That brings a finishing point. I mean, do you want Meredith to go in your place as ex officio member? And I guess we won't. I guess the alternate would be if one of us can't make it, or is it, oh, maybe making this a complicated...
That's fine, Meredith, I could, I mean, if it's meeting on a Wednesday, I could add...
Meredith and I will have a conversation once we get, once the schedules out to see if there's ones that I know I can't make. I would ask her to come in, in my place as the vice president. But I also think that she could be the alternate if someone's not there as well.
Okay, great. It's kind of ex officio, so you can have an alternate for an ex officio. I mean, if she can fill in for you anytime you can't, that's already decided, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
And we've been doing that.
Yep. All right. Public relations advocacy legislation, legislative committee?
Me.
I wonder, Craig, if you've given any thought to the way that that committee meets?
Probably less often.
Then I will...
I think we should figure a schedule on that that is more or less timed toward the, the trigger points in the, in the year when it's most appropriate. So probably we'd be, wouldn't be looking at 12, looking maybe at six, something like that. I'm guessing I haven't really gone through the calendar to figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, I think around budget season is really when, you know, the legislative...
Probably loaded up in January, February, March, May.
Sort of loaded more toward the front end of the year is logical.
I was thinking towards budget time.
I don't think we should just abandon the whole year. I mean, there are probably some other things to think about, but, yeah, we can downsize the schedule a bit.
Okay. Were you saying that?
Or?
I'll re-up for that one. It would be great if we could have a discussion around goals for the public relations aspect. I feel like that's not, we haven't discussed that angle much.
Yeah, but the...
Because that's where I can bring value. I don't, you know, I'm not real fluent with legislation, legislative, so...
Third member?
That is three, Craig, me and...
Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry.
Who's that, Craig?
Me and Alyssa.
Scoop, those are kind of scoop words?
I've been doing that for the past year. I think it's going to be hopefully a very interesting year. They're talking about sustainability for the entire year. Is there anyone, it's, it's very hard somehow for me to get to those meetings, they're Thursday nights. So if there's anyone else that's interested, or I would definitely like to have like a real alternate for that because I had to miss, I think, three meetings this year for travel.
I'd be willing to be an alternate for that, so, they're still on Thursdays, right?
Yeah.
Probably works for me. Yeah, it's still the first Thursday, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what kills me.
Where do those meet?
Those meetings.
Salt, salt went down, Mike. Bozies.
So I have Meredith with Craig as an alternate. District safety team?
That, I mean, what time, what time does that meet? You were doing it?
Usually 9:00 AM.
Um...
Once a month.
I can usually do that. Which day of, which day?
The parents.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe not.
This is tricky for me to do. Yeah, do, I, I can do it if you're not... I mean, I also, do, is there any value in like, does it always have to be one person? Because I almost feel like if we knew when the meetings were going to be, like, it would be good to rotate board members throughout that. For those kind of district committee? Yeah, I feel like then you kind of like get a little bit more of a sense of what's going on. It's not that, I, I don't know, like...
The hard part with that, though, Kristen, is, is that if they have to catch up. Like, sometimes it's like a progression.
Curriculum, I feel like there is a...
Progression.
Yeah.
I, I actually haven't found that to be the case. And in fact, I think there is, this is one meeting where oftentimes what we discuss in that meeting can't be shared publicly. So there is an argument for rotating because we all could have a little more insight to...
I'm, I was just saying in general for district...
I would suggest it for curriculum, but I'm suggesting it for this just because it's like, you don't really get a readout on it, but it's something that I feel like we're all tasked with having some understanding of.
Any concerns with that, Matt?
And I, I feel like I could, if I know something scheduled, I can block out time for it, but I can't have like a...
I could be an alternate as well.
We'll do rotating members?
Yeah. We'll know the schedule, so we can...
But do any of the rest of these committees meet in the evening? Or out, not during the workday?
The learning, the learning differences does.
Well, I, you know, the thing about that too, though, is, I don't, I feel like the, the way that that structure doesn't really... As a board member, I went twice this year and it's, it's more of a parent support group. And so it's, doesn't really, I think there's, whether it's folding it into curriculum or there's some, or frankly, diversity. I, I think that there's some goals that could happen around that, but I don't feel like there's, you know, mostly you find out about resources. It doesn't feel like it's a, and I do feel like sometimes there's an awareness that there's a board member there and if there's a district person record like presenting, then they, I don't know, it doesn't feel...
I mean, I will say that before it became a, a committee that's listed here on the list, and I, I used to go, but it was what you said, it was in a support group among the parents. It wasn't a district committee, it was kind of a parent support.
Well, I, I introduced it as a committee because of, because I feel like it's something that we only really hear about once a year when we, when it's budget time and we have presentations about it. But there's aspects of it that I think it would be, that we should engage with more or have goals with more, but I don't, I don't think that's the right venue for it. Maybe there's, maybe... It wants to just go to the diversity. I think we should remove it as a committee, but then maybe I would make a request that diversity considers or that we, or curriculum, that there's some place that where we...
It could definitely fit into curriculum and/or diversity.
Son is not leaving it anymore, is she? No, her son's graduated, so I, I think it's going to change a bit too, but I, I also don't think that that should be up to us to dictate. Like, maybe it just be, maybe it should just be like a parent support group and a resource group and it feels more fluid that way. Because then I think you end up like in this place where you're supposed to speak for the district and you can't.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
It used to be an IEP support group, then an IEP slash 504 support group and it turned into...
So you make a motion to dissolve it?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to dissolve it as a board committee.
Is there a second?
Second. Comments or questions?
Comments or questions?
My comment would be that I continue to see value of focusing on this issue as a part of our work, but I think we need to find a more appropriate space for it for the board.
Add a question. So this is technically not a board committee, right? This is a district committee, so we can't, we can't absolve it.
We're saying, to do the board involvement.
The board presentation.
Okay.
We're not devolving the committee, we're do.
No, it's a board.
Dissolving the board participation as a board member.
You mean the formal, okay.
Correct.
We're talking about learning differences, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
We jumped. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried out.
Seconded, I did.
Meredith. District Curriculum Committee? That was you, Meredith, in the past.
Yeah, um, I can continue that if.
How many committees are you on, though, now, like? Yeah, I think you should continue on that, because you've, I think you've built trust with the people that go, and you have, like, it has been evolving, but I just don't.
It's, I mean, the ones that are during the day are okay for me, because I can just pop in from working at home, it's, it's really the evening ones that start to get, because I'm, I'm gone evenings for work as well, so.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it, I mean, if Eric will have me.
Yes, of course. So we want alternates there too, no?
We can, you know, we can just make it a policy to, um, if you're not gonna make a meeting, which I have done with the Duchess County School Board thing, to silence, just sending out an email like, this meeting's coming up, and can someone go? So it doesn't, I don't even know if we need to be as formal as like, there is one alternate, but just let the board know, does that sound okay?
Sounds okay to me, as long as there's a system, and we all accept it.
We're okay with Flora having to help the mountainist committee?
Yes, yeah. If she comes back and says she doesn't want to, we can.
We'll talk about that.
Well, I'm only, I wouldn't speak so formally about it, except that we had texted about something different, and then she said, I think Alyssa was on the phone, she, she said she was still interested in mountainism.
I, yeah, I have almost no doubt that she wants to stay with that one.
Okay, you don't have to look it up, I'm just.
District Technology Committee.
So, they, it only, it only met twice this year, I'm on it, I was on it last year, um, but I don't understand what it is anymore. I know, like, this last one was about the smart bond, um.
That's what it was.
That's the formal function of it.
Yeah, and so it would stick, because it, because to me, like, when I went, it was, should I just not talk, or should we do this through some sort of formal process, by checking that? I just think that the last meeting was all about the exact same, it was literally a repeat of the.
F and O.
F and O meeting, and so with different people, which is fine.
We're not required to have a board member on.
A technology.
If it's just for, if it's just for the smart bond, which we also then are updated on in F and O, then I don't know that we need a board member on it, but if it, if, then I would say that some of the, because there's good people that go to it, there's like, the librarians, but should they, should that somehow, the technology related stuff to curriculum, be a part of curriculum?
That, that was a question that I had when I covered it, you know, because there was, especially from the parent person that was on the committee, wanted to discuss, actually, two, wanted to discuss curriculum in the technology committee, and they were told no. But, you know, it, it does, technology and curriculum sometimes are connected, so I think if the cur, if the technology committee does take on some curriculum, I think that we'd be more interested in that committee.
You want to take on curriculum, that would be curriculum committee.
Yeah, okay, so I, I mean, I think though, that like, I'm just gonna say from having attended only one of the two meetings that occurred this year, um, I do get concerned about, there's some, and you know, the staff volunteered for it, but it was like, it, I didn't feel like the best use, I know they, they said like, we're here to check off a box that we've seen this, and that's probably the formal process for the smart bond. So if they're comfortable with it, but it just didn't feel like the best use of.
But it seems like there's so much going on in technology way, especially with, you know, one to one, and, and it seems like this is a worthwhile committee to have a board represent, you know, representative on.
But I think it's more of the like technology plan and the smart bond aspect that gets updated for the state, whereas that one to one aspect is more curriculum based.
Do we have to keep it in, I mean, do we have to decide at this meeting, because shouldn't we get input from Mr., like, from Mr. Keely about how he sees that? It, it just feels like very, it just doesn't feel well defined, and I'm just, I'm, I'm becoming very aware of like, the amount of meetings, the, you know, the rush to get there, like, I, I had to move a bunch of stuff around, because it was at four, my kids were at home, I was supposed to be at work, and I got there and I was like, oh, this is the identical meeting I just attended on Tuesday. So I just, I feel like if we're using that staff time, it would be great to have like a real purpose to it, and, and not have this sort of redundancy, so it would be, it would just be helpful to hear from. You know, it, it almost felt like everyone was there because they felt like they were supposed to be there, and nobody could say that they didn't think it was the best use of their time, but just from observing it, I was like, maybe he should feel free to say like.
Well, who runs the tech, the technology committee?
My, Keely, but it's only, he was doing a lot this year, so there were only two meetings, and one of them I couldn't attend, and I think that would be great.
Does he have an expectation to, to hold a technology meeting, or have, have goals in curriculum, you know, a?
Not really, I mean, the, the committee kind of exists to deal with the smart bond, essentially.
So one of the things that Anthony brought up, which reminded me what, what happened when I was there, is the technology plan, you know, our technology plan is pretty much, I think, just the minimum, maybe more, but there are other school districts that have very robust plans.
Right.
What do you mean, our plan?
The, the technology plan was submitted to the state. Some, some, the, some apparent voted on a different school district's plan, and was like, you know, why can't our plan be like this?
Right, because it feeds into the budget, right, so where else does that plan get developed?
Well, I mean, I think we should defer maybe to, to.
I mean, a district, a district may also have a good plan in writing, which is not evident in implementation anywhere. I mean, I, I just want to be cautious with creating more committees, I'd like some time.
Yeah.
To rethink the best way to do this.
So what's table this?
Yeah, I, because it just felt like he was, it looked like everybody was working hard, like, nobody, nobody there was like slacker or didn't want to work, it just was like, everyone felt like they were supposed to show up, and they did. But it feels like it would be more fair to staff to like, let them say what works for them and what guides them, like, and use their time better, and that's the case.
We're gonna table it, you're gonna find out, talk to Mike and present back to us, Matt, whether or not it's, what, what your recommendation is for this committee.
So you made the motion, I need a second to Mike's.
Second.
Comments or questions?
I think that what would be helpful is to find out the physical plant, technology stuff, like cameras, things like that, could feed into facilities, there could be a curriculum piece that feeds into curriculum, however they design it, like, it might fold under existing things, it would just be helpful to.
Well, it did, I mean, and this is also just sort of goes with the state's timeline, I guess, if you want to call it that, because there was a plan, but then we ended up fulfilling through our regular budget, because the state took so long.
Well, that was the smart bond, yeah, like, it would be, as we see, if, if there's a need for a committee, it'll be up to map determine, to determine that, but if there's a way to weave technology into existing, um, existing, like, meetings, I think it would be, um, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried out. I need a motion to approve organizational items eight point oh one through eight point one five.
So you're handling like a consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, I, I made a motion to approve eight point oh one to eight point one five.
Did you say eight point oh five or eight point one five?
Eight point oh one through eight point one five. Is there a second?
The boss's motion?
To approve agenda items, organizational items, eight point oh one through eight point one five.
Eight point oh one.
Can I make a motion to amend this?
Well, that will be at the discussion part.
Oh, okay, second.
So now for discussion, is anybody like any items pulled from eight point oh one to point, eight point one five?
Uh, eight point oh five.
Any other items?
So you want to make a motion to amend the motion?
Hold on.
Or you just want to discuss?
Hearing none, others?
Because don't you usually do it, you can't do it that way.
No, because I didn't read the consent, it's, it's not a consent agenda, it's an organizational agenda, so I can't do the consent. So I need amended a motion to approve eight point oh one through eight point one five minus eight point oh five.
So moved.
Second. All right, um, comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So that was eight oh, and that, so Kelly, just so you, for the minutes, it's eight point oh one through eight point fifteen minus eight point oh five.
Yep.
Now I need a motion for eight point oh five.
To move.
Second.
Just point of order, you, you amended my motion, so my motion is still on the table, should we finish it?
We amended the motion, it was approved to be amended.
But it's still on the table, so we should finish now before we start another one, right?
It was amended, and so yours was then?
One point, point oh one to point one five minus point oh five.
Correct.
And that's on the table, so we should finish now.
That was voted on, that was eight oh.
No, the amendment was voted on. To.
So you want to vote again? That's fine, not a problem. All those in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried out, okay. All right, so I need a motion for eight point oh five.
Motion. Second.
Comments or questions? Meredith?
Um, do we have the amount that we spent on the paper, mystery newspapers?
Um, we paid, Beacon Free Press was one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, Highland Current was one thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars, and the Poughkeepsie Journal was one thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars.
What was the Beacon Free Press?
Um, one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars.
And the Poughkeepsie Journal was one thousand four hundred?
Fifteen.
This is for just legal notices, right?
Yes.
So I, I don't think we, we're, we are required by law to have two, and one of them has to be the Poughkeepsie Journal, we had a long discussion about this last year, it's great to finally have the numbers. I would, I would recommend that we go with the cheaper, which was the Highland's Current. And save ourselves eighteen hundred dollars to be spent on children.
I agree with that.
I know.
I agree with this one, but.
I don't think that this is, I understand, um, I think I understand, you know, why you would disagree, but I, I'd just like to say that these legal notices are not the kind of communication that I think we need to be, really focus on in the district, I mean, we have, obviously, we have to do our due diligence and get legal notices out, but it's not the kind of communication that I think helps to strengthen the district, um, and build the community. So I, I feel that just doing the, what is required by state is enough.
The Beacon Free Press is distributed very widely, and that's a key point.
Okay, so if you want to remove, if you want to make a motion to remove the Beacon Free Press from eight point oh five, you can make a motion, it can be seconded, and so you're amending eight point oh five.
Can I just question, spark a discussion, do we have any kind of numbers in terms of the distribution of the Beacon Free Press or the Highland Current?
I don't have them with me, no.
No. Would we have that?
The Highland Current is, you see it more and more and more places around, you know, in the, in the cities, definitely growing, um, so I think it's less of an obstacle than it has been in the past.
I'd have to ask them for it.
They're both.
They're both free papers, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think I can find it right now.
And the, the Free Press, um, is a, makes an attempt, uh, to deliver every doorstep and every storefront, and, um, by and large, you know, they have a percentage of completion, I don't know exactly what their batting average is. But I get it every week, and I see it at different places, and that has always been the traditional approach by that company, whether it's the Free Press or the Southern Duchess News. And, uh, I think I mentioned this before, but when they created their distribution pattern, they did it along school district lines. No other newspaper has ever done that, except for the Southern Duchess News Company.
Well, I'm, I'm okay.
So they do it all over through the Beacon School Districts, including in the town of Bobbinger and Fischko.
I think that it's not so much whether it's a worthy publication, I think we're just looking at fulfilling the requirement of putting legal notices in the paper, and then what our main focus, I think, is just where, how do we fulfill that requirement and spend the least amount of money?
I, I, I can weigh in a little bit.
I'm surprised how low it is, actually.
I mean, you know, the Beacon Free Press does have a, a door subscription to, which, which people pay for that, but, you know, I, I, so my point is though, is that I guess, you know, in the effort of, of communicating to the public and being, being, um, being open to communication, being open in our process. I think, um, it's the cost of doing business, um, you know, we do pay for postage as well, we did two mailers for the budget, we didn't have to do two mailers, it is, and probably, I think, we spent more money on postage than we have on, on newspaper ads. So, um, I think it's the cost of doing business in terms of being transparent with the community, I do know that there are some folks that rely on Beacon Free Press, I'm sure, Mr. White, you do?
Nope.
Not anymore?
Nope.
You defended.
I did.
Beacon Free Press.
I changed, I think current is out. They're out for a broader span.
For me, it's one or the other, I, if we, if we decided that the Beacon Free Press has better distribution, I'm okay with that, but I, I, I don't feel great about doing both, because I think there's a lot of overlap in their distribution, and it's, you know, it's doubling the cost there, and it's not a huge.
If it was for articles that were to publicize what's happening in the schools, it's for legal notices, which is, we're required by law to put them in two newspapers, and we're spending fifteen or eighteen hundred dollars extra to, to put out a legal notice.
And we did that only because we didn't have the numbers of the last couple of meetings, so that's why.
So to me, if we can get eighteen hundred dollars or fifteen hundred, whatever one we agree upon, back into educational program, I'm, I'm all for it.
Could, could you give an example of legal notice?
I might not be able to, because I.
Emily can tell you.
So that tells you.
The Highland Current's on.
How much you look at them in the newspaper.
I don't, I don't read those.
I'm just saying, they're usually in the back, right, and they have those long columns.
Right.
Right, and, and so there's, that's legal notice.
So what, what would be an example of something we, what was our last legal notice?
We had to do it for the budget, so there's, there's parameters, and it's three times it has to appear.
Yeah.
Um, if we do a bond, we have to do it, we have to put in there, um, food service did bids, we have to put those in there.
For the budget, budget, we send out flyers, right, separate mailers for the budget, so, you know.
Well, and that's not written in legalese, that's, you know, that's, that's something that's supposed to be really digestible.
Sure.
It's interesting the way the Highland's Current runs those notices, they're much more readable, they put it in bigger type, I notice, they give it a good play.
So, so I make a motion to remove the Beacon Free Press as one of the, one of the newspapers on this list.
So remove. Press from eight point, do you mind if I say from eight point oh five?
Eight point oh five, correct.
Okay.
Eight point oh five to.
Two.
Second.
Meredith, seconds.
All those continue the discussion, since that was the motion and the second. I think it sends a very negative message to the public when you remove somebody from the list.
What about when we added it last year?
It sends a positive message.
I don't know, I, all right, I think that we all spoke ad nauseam for this, where, Kristen, go?
She had an emergency.
Do you want to wait for her?
Do you?
Are you suspending the meeting officially, or?
I just don't want to vote and then have her come in and then. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Next. Next.
Let's do a roll call, I think, one, two, three, one, two, three, Alyssa, were you and I?
Yes.
How was it, how you were and I? And I heard Mike, so that was four, to three. And that was to remove the Beacon Free Press?
Correct.
The motion did not, it got the majority, but didn't get the five.
You need five, don't you need five votes?
Correct.
Yes.
So who, who voted in favor, let me just test that?
Mike, Meredith, Anthony, and Alyssa.
No, I didn't vote in favor, you voted in favor.
Anthony.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not Anthony, Anthony.
I'm sorry.
Got the H in there.
Correct.
It just kind of threw me off, you referred yourself in third person, sorry.
While I was going around the table. All right, so we're back to the original motion for, um, to approve eight point oh five.
Yeah, so do, are we in discussions still of that?
We are.
So I still, I, I still think that if, we don't, we're not required to have three newspapers, and so we're, so we're spending money that we don't need to spend, I think that, that is against our fiscal responsibility, even though it's a small amount. You can look what that amount of money can buy when you look at the lunches, right, so it's not, it's not miniscule, so I think something needs to be done with reducing those three newspapers. So it's not, it's not miniscule, so I think something needs to be done with reducing those three newspapers to two.
So, we had the discussion, with that being said, all those in favor of eight point oh five?
Aye.
Aye.
Heard two.
So what is the effect of that, what are we doing?
Eight, eight point oh five as is. The amendment didn't pass.
Right, but if the whole thing doesn't pass, then the school meal prices and.
That's true. Unless we segregate it.
I'm going to bring that up at the next meeting as well. Correct? Well, we did specify eight point oh five two.
No, I don't.
No, Mike did, only Mike did when he did the amendment.
Well, can we, can, can I make a motion?
You can make this, I'm going to make a motion.
To amend eight point oh five, the items one through six less um number two.
So the amended motion is to approve eight point oh five one through six minus.
Two.
Two. And that was from Meredith. Is there a second?
Second.
Are we, do, when do we need to, to approve, because we're legally required to have two newspapers, when do we, when do we have to do that? So we're, we're talking about approving this without that?
No, we'll vote on that separately.
But this is part of my discussion, my question of understanding, because it sounds like we're setting ourselves up to vote on the same issue twice.
It's not, because the first issue was with the removal of the Beacon Free Press.
Sure.
The second one was eight oh five as is. And now it's eight oh five, one point, one through six minus two.
So my question is, is what happens if we don't approve?
Last year, we didn't approve it until like August.
That's what I was.
Just, just, just a point of order again, I mean, you did call for a vote for eight oh five and now you're going back into discussion. Is that, is that supposed to be where we were supposed to run this thing?
People, we didn't finish the vote.
So it's allowed?
We were in discussion, I made a, a motion.
Yeah, but you, you called for a vote, you got two votes. I mean, uh.
We didn't finish the vote.
Right, I made a motion to withdraw a poll, Beacon Free Press, we voted on that, it fails, so we're back to eight oh five.
Yeah.
Now it's a motion to approve eight oh five, one, three.
Yeah.
It was amended a motion for eight oh five, one through six minus two.
Right.
And again, you're saying, we started a vote.
We started the vote, I don't think it's, I don't know if it's robust or, it should be.
Was that two votes for yes and?
We didn't finish the vote, the vote didn't happen.
We're still in the vote, here we're still.
Yeah, but you're in the process of collecting votes, that's what I'm saying, it was already called to order.
And then a trustee asked for an amended motion. And my understanding is, is as long as the vote hasn't completed and taken place, you could go forth with amendments.
Okay.
So we're, now we're voting on eight point oh five, one through six minus two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried eight oh. We need a motion for eight point oh five, number two.
So moved.
Second.
That was Anthony and Meredith. Alright, so we're voting on just the newspapers, Kristen, just so you're aware. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Oh, wait, what?
Roll call.
Oh, maybe we should have caught Kristen.
I'm sorry.
A tiny bit.
I thought we were just voting on voting on the newspaper, not the, which.
Well, we had a, we had a vote.
Okay.
That was um to remove the Beacon Free Press and, and it was four to three, but we didn't have um quorum, so it didn't pass.
You didn't, you had quorum, you didn't have five votes.
We didn't have five votes, which would be the majority.
Sorry.
So, so now we're just voting on um number two as is with the three newspapers.
With the three newspapers. And I need roll call.
Ms. Garvin?
Opposed.
Mr. Casleal?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Opposed.
Mr. Rakowski?
Opposed.
Mr. Sim?
Support it.
Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
Sear?
Opposed.
Mr. White?
Opposed.
So that's five nos. Three.
Okay. Alright, so that would be added to the next agenda. We can't vote on the same item twice. Okay.
Should we vote on it individual paper by paper? I mean, I'm fine, I'll do it next meeting, just saying.
We'll do it next meeting.
Okay.
Moving right along.
Alright. So I need a motion for nine point oh one, the uh non-instructional personnel list. Oh, yes, yep, same one, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried eight oh. Any motion to approve nine point oh two instructional uh personnel list?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried eight oh.
A motion to table nine point oh three, so that the committee, policy committee can review, with legal counsel.
Anthony made a motion to table nine point oh three, is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
There's discussion, what, I would ask the policy committee in this one in particular to um, when, when this first reading is given out to us, to please, if you annotate it, so we can see the, clearly see the changes that are being proposed uh to the policy. That'll help in the, in the review. So that would be my, my request.
You're asking that for any policy, not just for?
Well, I, actually, it's a good point, this one in particular, but any policy will really help, usually they're short, so you can kind of read through them. But I do want to see uh what changes are being made. I, I think that, I think that requests would not be directed to the policy committee, but to the administration. Typically, the policy committee uh sends it to the administrators and then they put it in PDF form and then distribute it, so. Well, make, make the policy committee to make sure that the administration, yeah. Okay, I'll tell the administration.
I, I mean, I.
Either way, one, you need to.
I mean, from my review, I mean, I sympathize, I do that, but it'd be my personal version of comparison, because I, I reverse it. I reverse the PDF back to a Word document with a lot of stuff, but, so, I mean, it'd be easier if somebody already had the Word document, the original one, the new one, to do that.
It sounds like just, but, I mean, I think what Mike is talking about is just the way documents are shared typically in like a, in a work environment, when you have something and then someone's changed it, made changes, you have to track changes, so it's like, these were proposed by this person and then these were proposed by that person, so then you have like a clear understanding.
Even, yeah, more than red bars, but with the bars, plus they have the strike, you know, strike through and the replacement, so that we can, then we can see.
Yep.
You know, because part of the, part of the policy is to make sure that, you know, we, we understand the changes and that they're implementable. So I like to see them clearly.
Do you want to give context of why it was changed, James? Or you feel that the policy was not what the policy committee brought forward?
This, I mean, well, maybe to start with a question, um, that might direct to, to Matt. Because the, the version that we got had many of the changes that we did recommend. Um, and then there were some changes which we had a note from legal which explained why those were, were coming back with their recommendations, some of which were reverted back to the first draft. And then there were some other, there was some other variation, uh, that seemed to be kind of a, like, maybe it was coming from a hybrid version, it was kind of confusing to me. And I, with this one in particular, I think, I mean, we did two marathon sessions, it's a pretty massive policy, so we did a lot of work. And we're trying to, to really just get it through quickly. Um, and I think really just when we're ready, we're trying to, to push it through a little faster and then we can get through legal review and keep all the versions clear, so.
So, it was edited, I, I, hold on, can I just ask, it was edited and then it was stated at the policy committee meeting that it was going to go for legal review, and then this policy is what was, with the edits, with the exception of legal changing that aspect? Those, those were the changes I, I thought from the committee.
Right.
Eric, I'm looking at Eric, it was just the ones that came back to us from the legal review. Some of our language wasn't in line with New York State law, you know. Of course, a few of the phrasings weren't, I don't want to say they weren't legal, but they weren't, you know, they weren't in line with the way it laws written. So, just to kind of expedite it, we, I, I tried my best uh to update the committee with what the lawyer sort of said in terms of the changes uh over the weekend. And then we, you know, that was the one we put forward. The, the track change part has been a little challenging, um, I, I talked with Eric for a while today about a way to kind of show the changes, because we've gotten some of the changes from, from the chair of the committee, from James, and so at some point, pretty early on, we sort of lost the ability to do every change. We can try to go back and highlight, I think, because that's where we'd be right now.
I think, well, we had, because the, and this was when we, I, when we had so many edits, because we had a lot of these policies we were going through, I was keeping track of all the changes that we approved in committee, and I sent that as a Word doc to Eric. And that's the part where I feel like maybe there was, it, it seemed almost, and maybe I'm trying to imagine the process, that some of those changes were then being, being looked at in the document I sent and then recorded on a separate document. Perhaps it seemed like there, there was a merging process in that, because some of the changes got put in and then some of them didn't. There were a couple of typos that I had corrected in policy that then were still appearing on the other version, which made me feel like maybe it was referring back to an older version, some of those changes, so it was just, it was a little confusing. So I feel like if we could agree, we're starting on, on the one version that, that we approved through the policy committee and then send that version to legal, if they're both in Word format, you can do a comparison. And we can compare the changes legal made to our changes and we can do a comparison of our version to the original version that was presented to us, and we could also then look and compare that document to the policy as it exists.
Wouldn't it be easier?
So.
We use, like, a Google Doc instead?
Google Doc, I don't think compares, doesn't do a compare like as good as Word does.
Why don't you have a um, a person, a designated person managing the document as the sort of record keeper? I mean, if it's going to be, if there's going to be more substantial changes, I, I, there were sort of two different things that seemed to get addressed in the email, one was um the, the issues maybe with the, the um, sort of how the document was tracked and then a question of, of uh if there were some subjective judgment being exercised over the document. I think we should probably address the subjective judgment issue in the meeting with the attorney, so they could speak to whether they, that was motivating them. But I think, I'm sorry, I think that um, you know, it, whatever happens in that meeting, if there's one person who's managing the document and then they could capture everything.
Yeah, as long as, as long as I can see what the change differences are.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that the.
And, and if we get it, you know, sooner, well, this one, because it's so large, to get it as soon as possible to be able to, to review it. Uh, and also just a, a slight clarification, I think our committees, our committees provide recommendations, like, they're not, you know, they're not approved, the policy committee didn't approve it, and really recommending to the board.
Yeah.
You know, that's just, it's a tweak, but uh.
Yeah, you wouldn't. Well, I actually wanted to say that I, I feel that, my understanding during the committee meeting was that um, we, we knew that it was going through legal, our, our administrators were, um, had concerns about some of the changes and I, for one, am very interested in um, in hearing legal's opinion. I don't want to create a document that, that is not accepted by staff, that the administrators don't feel that they can present, you know, with their with their recommendation themselves. I mean, I think it's important to, I think it's important to take that into consideration.
True.
And so it was, you know, it's not something that we voted on per se, I think there was a lot of um, there's a lot of questions from Eric and Matt about how legal would respond to some of the edits.
And this is something, and I think actually I would like to see this, this request I would make to legal moving forward, because oftentimes there's, you know, when we send policies, any changes that we make, um, recommendations we make to the policies, we send those to legal for review. We're asking for a couple of different perspectives. One, obviously, is, is the changes that we may be making, does that violate any standing law? Can we actually, are we allowed to legally enact this, you know, so we can't put any policies in place that are a direct violation? And then there's the other perspective where we're asking our attorneys to determine what degree they may open us up for, make us more liable, or create some kind of potential risk, right? And to me, that's an area that becomes particularly more tricky when we're talking about issues that speak to our, our equity goals. You know, there's no greater policy or, let's say, law that creates more liability for a district than the Dignity for All Students Act, you know, I mean, so we have to, to recognize that when we create protections for some students, for our student bodies, that does create, from a legal perspective, the potential for them to feel like that's creating more risk for the district. So I want to believe that in all cases, when we're acting to protect our students, we're also acting to protect our, our district. And I want to know, I want to have a clear distinction from our attorneys, if they're saying we're creating a, a risk for the district, is that at the sake of um risk for our students? You know, that's, that's something which, which I want to think about, particularly having our equity report card in mind and all the great work we're doing, the district has been doing, this is something that we've heard through all of our, um, all of our, our outreach to the community. I think we all keep hearing this is a, a major concern. I think that the changes that we did recommend, that legal might think open us up to some, I think, risk along those lines, are all very much in line with what we've said publicly and what I've heard from our community is what we want to see. So I want, I'd like to have those distinctions, because when I hear legal say something might open us up for potential risk, what I really want to hear is um, can our attorneys protect us from an unreasonable abuse of that policy? You know, does that make sense?
I, I didn't totally follow that. I mean, but some of the things that were concerned is like that they were um, that, that we're putting things in there that we haven't had the time to train our staff properly for, for example.
Well, that, that wasn't anything that I.
Well, I think the restorative justice is something that, you know, we're sort of newly introducing to staff, not all staff has been trained. And so when you put it in the code of conduct, you are, you know.
I didn't put that in there. Eric put it in there.
Well, you changed some of the language around it. Um, there was one line that was in the, the um, the document that Matt sent about um being, you know, the original said something being open to doing this, and you wanted to change it to like just doing this, and it, sorry.
No, I didn't.
It was your suggestion, I, okay, sorry, sorry, it was, but it was, it was suggested by someone in the committee, I can't remember who. Um, and, and legal, for example, said, you know, this is, the, the lang, the original language is much more acceptable. Um, I think that Matt and Eric were saying the same thing, because this is something that we are building in our community and it's, it's not something that is built.
No, I, I actually, and this is where I don't, I don't want anyone to have the impression that I'm wholly against legal review. Because I actually, I see that and I, I understand that. There are some of the other, uh, other things that were removed that, that seemed a little more pointed um and less explained. So I think if you look at our policy twenty-four ten and policy development, I'm sure you guys reviewed it.
Yeah, we have.
You know, it's pretty clear, actually, one thing it answers, the superintendent or designee shall be responsible for preparing a written draft of all proposed policies.
Mm-hmm.
When reviewing the contents of proposed policy, the board will consider whether the proposed policy is within, within the scope of the board's authority, is consistent with state, federal law, and the state and federal constitutions, supports the district's goals and objectives, reflects good practice, educational, personnel, business, et cetera, is reasonable and not arbitrary or discriminatory, adequately covers the subject, is consistent with the board's existing policies, which is one of the things I wanted to really see, and can be administered in a practical, cost-effective manner. So it's got a lot of the tenants we're talking about. So, you know, assuming the policy committee is following this, then then that's kind of a good roadmap that we have in our, in our twenty-four ten policy.
I think that the focus seems to be capturing in language of the code of conduct what you want to exist already. That would be a top-down approach to policy. And I think we're talking about two separate things. We're talking about culture, which is not, you cannot spell out in every way in your policy. And then policy, which is what, which is where we have written down things where we do need to protect ourselves legally. It's, as trustees of the district, that is our responsibility. We are also tasking an administrator to create a culture that fits with our goals. And I think that it reminds me a little bit of the, what was the, the APPR, which was, there was this goal of like, we want to do this and it's going to come down. And we're going to tell everybody like this is how it's going to be done. And I almost think, like, and then because it came in this top-down way, it created this reaction. And I think that when we think about this policy, I think we need to think about, there's some things, if it starts to build, that comes through trust and through culture. But if we pull it, put it in a policy and say you have to do it, and you have to do it this way, and this is exactly what it looks like, we're risking a reaction. That's all.
I just want to, I'm sorry to get, but I don't think the committee is, 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 is also, I think the committee is in agreement with that. I don't think we're doing top-down. I think we're making a lot of good suggestions. And then it has to get, those suggestions get vetted. And if it is a little too top-down, we want to hear why it is top-down. And I think we haven't had that opportunity. So, you know, and then also to address Mike.
What opportunity?
To see, to see what are, you know, what, you know, are our suggestions? Is it, is it out of bounds? You know, why is it out of bounds for legal? Is it, is it because, you know, are we choosing the difference between the risk of the school district versus the risk of the student?
I mean, those are different things. That's about the code being aligned with New York State law. I think Kristen's talking about the implementation of restorative practices, right? And I think we have talked about that in terms of not wanting to be top-down.
Yeah, and I think we've tempered the language on that. We had the conversation.
I think what I'm going to need is some real clarity on how this committee meeting is going to work. Because we, if, if, if the attorney is there, which I think is a good idea, is that like an exec session of the committee? My concern there is the attorney would be getting his advice on where we're having.
Vulnerable.
Where a particular, you know, where a particular part of the code might be more vulnerable. I'm not certain that's a public discussion. And then is it, and this is just me reviewing in my mind. I know this is very basic, but like, so a lawyer gives us, one of our attorneys gives us advice on one line. Is the committee voting on each of those? Like, how are we going to navigate through that? Because we're, we're looking at, I'm not sure how, I want this meeting to happen, but I'm not sure how we're going to get to the endpoint.
Right.
Is it, is it like voting on each thing? Is it?
Well, I was sort of interested as to why it was like being recommended to be tabled as to what? Because my understanding was the policy, and I wasn't there. The policy committee met. There were some edits that went to, and two administrators, district administrators were there. And it was brought to legal for legal review. And then this is the policy that came forth.
My concern is there are several, several changes that, in the document that we presented to us, that differ from the document that we sent to legal review. That it's been reverted to previous language without any explanation from legal necessary, you know, without markup. We did get some notes that, from legal that pointed at specific issues. Some of them I actually, I can see and I think they're reasonable. Some of them, I, they say are, it's unclear if they're saying it's a violation of law, where we have examples of.
So you're looking for the rationale.
I'm looking for the rationale.
So you're looking for the rationale. What I'm hearing is that the district administrators, you said we had it for legal review. You sent it or the administrator sent it?
I sent it to Eric.
Okay, so the administrator sent it, they probably reviewed it, and then they sent it to legal for legal review. And this is the final product that's on the agenda tonight, from that aspect.
I have doubts about that. Honestly, I have concerns about the flow because, and this is the part, it's a very long document. We spent a very, a lot of time, when we, when I go through and you start finding inconsistencies between versions, and I'm talking even like typos, that we corrected in committee, that were corrected in the version I sent, that have now reappeared after legal. So if you imagine you're, you're moving a document forward, if in, in committee we create, we correct some typos that I don't believe legal would have reinserted, and this now comes back with old typos, that tells me we're working out an old version.
So then it's just the typos that you have concerns about?
Well, no, 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 because then I go through and then start looking at what were some of the more important changes that were not mentioned by legal in their notes? Because they came back to us with notes about some of their changes. And some of those I went through and I looked at and I was like, oh, actually, we've reverted down to previous language. So it's confusing to me.
Previous language that was in the, that was in the policy prior to the committee editing it?
Correct.
And that could have been because the legal reviewed it and thought that that language was.
It could have been.
Okay.
But he's saying that he thinks an old version was sent to him.
Sure.
I've heard a lot. We had, who was giving to you guys prior to the committee meeting, that Dr. Landos sent to everyone. Prior to that, when I presented here at one of the board meetings in June, I explained that some of the major changes we were making was to, we were adding the latter, you know, lateral consequences, you know, to it. That the changes, a lot of the changes that took place was in the draft from NISBA. And so with that, there was a lot of language put in around restorative practices. So a lot of, a lot of the document changed based off of that. So what, a lot of the edits or revisions or questions or concerns had to do with NISBA's language at our policy meetings. So when I took that back to the attorney, the attorney said that that language was put in there for a reason, you know, because it follows state law. And so, and so that went for a lot of the changes that were recommended, especially the changes that had to do with definitions. Because the definitions were vetted by, of course, the attorneys, you know, the state's attorneys. So we had to go back to the original language. There was no other conversation about who could be used in case we're not able to get this to fly by with the attorneys.
So the committee was adjusting definitions for words in the policy?
Yes.
For example, the NISBA recommended definition for sexual orientation limits to three categories, heterosexual, homosexual, and bisexual. Committee recommended that we use the legal definitions accepted by New York City and recommended by an organization called the Safe Zone Project, which does professional development for LGBTQ for all of CUNY and has recommended how all of City University of New York has changed their legal definition to make it not gender-specific.
Is, I'm sorry, is CUNY a, is that, is that college or is it?
It's the City University of New York system.
College.
It's college, it's not, it's not elementary school?
Not school-aged.
Well, I'm, I don't know.
Right, right, yes. Not, not a K-12 school, it's post-secondary.
So that's referring to language for college students, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, it's in line with the legal definition for New York City, which applies to all people, all ages.
I heard that, I heard you say CUNY, because I wonder, I was just.
Well, I, I was just letting you know, we were using, we didn't make up, we didn't invent that language. That didn't come from the committee, that was coming from a fairly well-vetted source. So that's an example of one of the definitions. It was our belief, or it's my belief, when I recommended that change, and the committee shared that, that it didn't change the definition in a way that the spirit of the reason why NISBA has that, those definitions is for inclusion. Our definition includes those, their three categories. But in the world we live in today, there are more than three categories of sexual other. So that's an example.
And then our attorneys felt that we needed to go with the NISBA-recommended definitions?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So there is a motion on to table the, the policy 5300 and through 53.75. And that's on the table. All those in favor of tabling it?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm opposed. So that's one to seven. So the motion is, I'm sorry, seven to one. So the motion is going to be tabled until next meeting.
Oh, is there any room for a follow-up comment?
Well?
Is there a room for a follow-up comment? Because I feel like there was something that didn't get addressed, which is Matt was saying he needs clarity on how the, what this will look like when we, when it comes up again.
So why don't I make a motion for a tatted item to the agenda, just to be clear?
Well, we also need to schedule a policy committee, committee meeting to review this.
So motion to add an item to the agenda?
Yep. Kristen, is there a second?
Second.
Meredith, comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The item is going to be discussion about a policy meeting?
Yeah, and I didn't, I mean, we don't, I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, he brought up, raised this issue and I don't want to just leave it open without at least addressing it, which is, what, what does it look like if our attorney says this was the rationale? And then there's disagreement about the, it's almost like, I guess what I'm wondering is, if it was agreed upon that this would be sent, that if there was an understanding like this was going to be sent for legal review? And then it was going to come for us, to us after it was reviewed by legal? What's the process going forward? Like, is it that we are, is there a threshold of like what will be acceptable from them? Because I, I feel like.
I would like, I'd like to ask, first off, I'd like to begin with, so we're all on the same page, starting with the same version. The version which, which I went through many times, we went through line by line in committee. We did copy edits, we found typos, we found mistakes, we corrected those. I'd like for us to start from that version. I can send it to you, Eric, again, we can review it if you think that it doesn't. Start from that version and send that to legal. I'd like for legal to make all of their changes marked. And I'd like for them to have a distinction between two categories of changes. I'd like for them to make a distinction of this is a violation, this is not, we can't do that legally. I think there are only a couple of those.
Or it's a recommendation.
What's that?
Or it could be their recommendation.
Or their recommendation-based.
Right, it doesn't have to be a violation or anything. It'd be to best protect the district, this is our recommendation.
Yeah.
And that could be their piece.
Two categories. One, to say.
So the one concern I have though, James, is starting with a document that we all haven't seen, right? So if we have a document on here that is the document, that should be the starting document. We've all seen this and reviewed this for tonight's meeting and this is what's being tabled. So at the policy meeting, why would we start with a different document that's not this?
Well, I think, I do understand that he, they, they put in, in a lot of time and thought into this. So I can, I can definitely understand the sense of like, I, that there was an agreement, that there was a version that would be reviewed. And to see it come back without any reference or even like a strike-through of the language that had been included in there would be frustrating. Like, I could, I definitely can understand that. That, I think, if, if we could, we could table this policy, but I also think that we can certainly, I don't know if it makes sense to just keep working with this. One second, let me just finish my thought before. Because when I see your hand, then I'm thinking like, what's Anthony going to say? So I'll just finish and then I promise, like, but I.
Yeah, no, just raise your hand, please.
I know, but this is very, it's just frustrating. So I think that the, I think that the, if there's a way to either enumerate the changes, like if you could capture that in, in a separate document, an addendum, just to be like, you know, these are the things. I don't want to put more work on you, but these were the issues that were, that were added or outstanding. Or if you, you know, whatever process is determined, if you feel comfortable sending the document that James sent and then they annotate it, that, that would be one process question.
We can do that.
Yeah, that, and then the second part of it though is, I feel like, I would like us to have like the most sort of generous and respectful interpretation. We hired the software and we went through like an RFP process and we, so I don't want their recommendations perceived as having a certain perspective.
I don't want that either.
Right. But you were saying in the email that you were worried about their political views.
I did have that concern.
So I mean, but their role is to protect the district and make sure that they could defend us if something comes up.
I'm allowed to have that concern.
No, but I, I think that, I think that that's.
We're an apolitical body, so I'm concerned that you have that comment, actually.
Okay.
It's not, it's not in a way, like, I, I understand where, what might have, where it might come from is sort of like a, I, I think that, just that, like there, when I saw that, I want to make sure that this is, this is like a group that we work with. If you had been part of the RFP process, I think you would have seen it's a, it's a pretty diverse group of people. I think that there was, there were a lot of things about it that, you, you've only seen certain people from that firm. And I think that I don't want to bring them here and then have it, have their professional recommendation interpreted as a subjective, like, I just, I feel like we should.
What raised my concern about the, the one issue that I brought up was that the, the advice they gave on one issue was something that there is precedent for and there is a legal definition that, that does protect the district. And they didn't, they didn't reference that. They seemed to actually say very definitively, they thought it would be a problem where having, you know, having done my own research, looking at examples of other districts in the state and the country that have done identical policies, they made no reference to this. So it's, I think it's just important that, that the policymaking be made, board policies be made by the board and not by, by legal.
I understand that, I understand that.
That's a good point, and I want to just, that's an excellent point. So it seems like since it is such an important policy that I think we're all pretty interested in, you know, just the, having the policy committee themselves putting your, you know, thoughts and ideas in here, when it's really board policy is maybe some of the rubs. So maybe if we have the marked version, maybe we need to have a exec session with the attorney and we go through and we talk. Because some of these things may be subjective and we may vote to say, no, we, we vote as a majority to have this, this, and this, or that, that, and that. And we decide as a, as a board to define. Otherwise, we might go around and around a couple of times.
Honestly, I would, I would agree with that. The version which we went through, I think, included, honestly, a lot of it was copy edits. Most of it was copy edits, a lot of corrections, some of it was just cleaning up the language.
We couldn't tell, I didn't look at it because I'm like, you know, where am I going to spark the differences?
And then there was, there was probably a handful of, I'd say probably five, that are, that are touchy. And I think honestly, I was fully expecting us to have substantial conversation in, in meeting. But I think that having that and a special executive might make sense, to be honest.
I think that's a good deal.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah.
Would it help if I already done a compare contrast from the old code of conduct? I have, you know, you can go to the policy, download the Word documents, I've merged it all. And I've done that compare that you're looking for if folks are, folks are.
You did that, you did that with our original.
Oh, the e-policy.
You did it with the original one we brought to the committee, not the new one?
Yes, I didn't do it with the new one, no, so.
I think if the new one represents.
I could run the compare, I mean, you know, I mean, I could volunteer to be the keeper of the version, I guess, because it sounds like there's different versions flying around, I can help with that as well.
It sounds like it's just the version that James sent to Eric. That's the last version that reflects the.
James sent me the version.
James sent me the version Thursday afternoon about four something P.M.
Mm-hmm.
You know, what I said prior in both of the sessions that we had is that I had to speak to legal to ensure that these changes, you know, uh, will be okay. And so, being that the document took so long to get back to me, I had to contact legal the changes how I had it, you know, uh, from, from my notes to see if it was okay. You know, legal got back to me on Friday.
Right, cause it goes on the agenda.
And the thing about it is that I had to make sure that I got it to you guys by Friday evening.
Right.
You know, so that you couldn't, so that you could start reading.
Right.
I mean, it seems like we just, we're trying to get it out quickly and I think we re-rushed and we missed, some of our versions got mixed up a little bit. And this is, um, cause I, I feel like the version that we got back that was reviewed, maybe even the version that legal saw, and that actually makes a lot more sense that some of the notes were, were sent, the, so used some of the notes we, we had from our conversations in committee, went to your version, which that went to legal, and then there was some kind of merging process. But it seemed like, um, they weren't perfectly merged. Um, so, it, it seems to me that this is the version that should go to legal. We should get a markup, we should all see those markups and be able to go through together and talk about it with legal.
That's, that makes sense.
Everyone just wanna see a markup.
Yeah, let me, I, I would as well. And honestly, like I-
So, you wanna do a special board meeting on July fifteenth?
No.
He's, what? I mean, want, is that?
Sure.
I'm on vacation.
Are people available?
I'm on vacation.
No, no.
I, I'm, I'm, the end of that week, I'm like, oh.
I have to participate by phone.
I, I don't think that works for something like this. I just, I, I think the one tricky thing is just like the, um, I think that, I think if we could get us all like in a room, I think it would be better.
I'm free for now till the eighteenth.
Cause I mean, this, there's like, it extends a bit.
I just, I just have, I have-
So, raise your hand if you're not available on the fifteenth?
If you're not available?
Not available.
Not in person.
Okay, the sixteenth?
I'm in a lineup.
Not available.
Raise your hand if you're not available?
Not available.
I'm out thirteen to twenty.
I'm out seventeen to twenty.
I'm trying to have it before the, the next board meeting, which is the twenty-second.
Do we do it next week?
What about this week? Matt's on vacation. Matt's on vacation next week.
Anthony, I won't be here for the regular board meeting on the twenty-seventh. I'm at the middle of all middle of the year.
How about the eleventh?
I won't be here on the twenty-second either.
The eleventh?
The eleventh.
I could do the eleventh.
Everybody available third?
July third?
Sure.
Wednesday?
Can we, can we get legal review that quickly?
I could, you could call and ask.
Okay. We can do that.
Third?
I'm available.
I could do that.
You have-
Okay. All right.
What kind of meeting is this?
It's like, it's like a summer.
Special meeting for exact-
Special meeting, exact.
All right, Wednesday, July third. Kelly, can you do notice?
I'm out that day.
I think fireworks.
But you could put notice out tomorrow.
Is it, I don't know.
Special board meeting on-
New Year's fireworks?
Fireworks that night?
No, they were Saturday.
No, that's Memorial Park's fireworks or something. New Year's, New Year's is the third. Did you wanna see the New Year's?
No, sure, it's, it's all right. We'll be, we'll be done by the time fireworks go off, right?
Probably not.
You can start at six.
It'll be the fireworks.
Yeah, sometimes like-
Can't make it till seven?
No, I'm saying, what time are you doing?
I'm asking, can we start at six?
Yeah, that's, yes.
Oh.
No.
I'll do my best, but I can't make any promises.
You're really killing me.
Seven to six here.
But our policy that's here tonight.
Who can't make a six o'clock start? Cannot make-
That's all.
It, I'd have to make some sort of word arrangements and I don't know if it's, I could do it, that's all. But I won't announce it to work tomorrow morning.
So, let's do six o'clock, Kelly.
Location? Here?
Yep.
Where?
Near the board office.
At the board office?
I probably don't have staff here Wednesday night.
District office. District office.
District office.
Could do during the day if people are available, like eight o'clock, nine o'clock in the morning.
You gotta bow to us each other, right?
Same, it's the day before the fourth.
I know.
You picked it.
Well, because if we don't have it before the third, it wouldn't happen until at least the fourteenth. There's no one available on the fifteenth, sixteen, seventeen, eighteenth in our next board meetings, the twenty-second. So, yes, I did pick it in the best interest of the district. All right, so we're at the third at six o'clock at district office. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Wait, did we, did we, did we vote on the table? We don't?
Yes.
We went to the table, I added this, I'm sorry.
We added, yeah, we added.
Yeah, we added.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.